All right, good evening, everyone. Please join for the August 13th regular scheduled meeting for the pledge allegiance. All right, we have a nice crowd here tonight. Thank you, everyone. First thing on the agenda, any public input? I see there we have officers, we have police commissioners, anybody? No, no, we'll get to your part. Any correspondence, Mary?
No.
No, no correspondence, excellent. All right, first thing on our regular scheduled meeting is minutes from July 9th, July 9th, excuse me. Everybody have a minute to read them and then we like to make a motion.
Make a motion that except the minutes has written.
And we have a motion, do we have a second?
I was second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion on the mention July 9th? Bobby, are you over here? Everybody sure?
Everybody checked the Bobby.
Everybody in Bobby's. Excellent, all right. With no other comments, I'll try everybody's mind, everybody in favor, see who wants to say an aye.
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 All right, let the record show. All right, planning and zoning?
Yeah.
You go all the way up to the back and towards the back corner of the building. All right, next thing, consideration for CNR for the controls, for the AC controls. I see Dr. Carver here. It's Tyler, right?
Yeah.
Tyler, great, thank you.
Sure, I'll start and I'll have Tyler comment on the technical part. So those of you working that kind of, this is Tyler Stevens, and he has replaced Dr. Manero as our facility.
Oh, great.
I think about their facilities in, uh, security. Okay.
There's more titles. It'll get bigger.
So, um, we're here with a request of something that was actually on our capital plan a few years ago. And I know John and Nick attended our walkthrough at Bethel Middle School last, uh, before the, I think it was last winter before the budget season. Um, and we had shared with you that at the time that we knew that our Jaces in our, actually in all three schools, the middle school, Berry and, um, the high school, with the middle school being the biggest problem right now, um, need to be reprogrammed, that they were out of date and they weren't working well with our automation system. Well, because we had a variety of issues at Bethel School, um, over, I would say it started in the late spring, um, through the summer, um, with humidity temperatures, inability to regulate buildings, um, water in the buildings at times, uh, because it's been raining every second, it seems like. Um, it really had, it led to a mold issue in the, and, uh, and so we had hygienics come out, some testing of it. Thank God it wasn't in, uh, the air. Uh, and we've notified parents about this too, that, that it was there and it's being, it actually just, uh, they completed the remediation.
Been completed, we're waiting on final testing.
Right, but it actually, uh, actually looks good because they were able to replace, if you remember, some of those tiles, um, that we've been wanting to get rid of for years, um, in the remediation process. Um, and, and Tyler, do you want to talk a little bit about the Jaces and kind of what they would do?
Yeah, so currently the programming for the automation system, in a modern system, the program will live on a server and the Jace would just be a communication device. The server communicates the Jace, Jace goes out to field controllers, field controllers go up to devices, and it's just your, your pathway of communication with our current systems at the middle school, high school and Berry. The graphics and the programming actually lives on the Jaces, and because they're not designed to hold that, it, it causes a lot of slowdown of the communication. It also causes them to lock up intermittently and it causes drops in communication. Um, in, in conjunction with that, we have the virtual and a physical point for every piece of equipment. And the dual points are adding to the problems that we have with Jaces of communication drop. It's basically running the middle school incapable of running in automatic, which is the whole purpose of the building automation system. So I've been running it manually, the whole building, uh, since I started. The Berry and the high school aren't as bad, but they are both showing similar symptoms, which are basically if I make a change and try to have the, the system run in automatic, sometimes it will take, sometimes it'll refuse to take the change, sometimes it'll take it and then at any point after it will decide to revert back, which is a lot because we have the virtual and physical points. So as part of this work that is in front of you guys tonight, it's, it's taking the graphics and programming off of the Jaces, returning them to just being a communication pathway, and then also removing the digital points. So we don't have that dual, dual point issue where they can, you might make the change on the virtual, but then the physical point decides to revert back. So we don't expect this to solve all of our problems, but this is the first step that needs to happen so that we can then identify and correct any future problems. And my vendor is confident this will solve most of our problems. I tend to trust that assessment right now based on what I've seen. Again, Berry and high school are showing similar issues where they will revert on their own sometimes, but the middle school has been a main problem.
So in terms of the remediation and the cost of the remediation, we actually used our unexpected funds account, um, because it was close to $100,000 to do that remediation. Um, so, but again, this was part of the capital plan that we had originally put on there and, um, and so that's what we're requesting to hopefully address the issue, or at least get us on the right path to addressing the issue.
And, sorry, and the remediation piece, we are pursuing an insurance claim on it.
Correct.
Uh, our deductible, depends how they read it, we could have upwards of $50,000 with the coverage, we have $25,000 deductible, we don't know if that's net. We don't know if we get 25, we don't know, sometimes they said, sometimes they end up covering above the 50,000. So we're submitting it, we'll see what happens. But as of right now, if we don't get anything back, it's coming out of their unexpected.
Um, Tyler, I know we talked, is, is this gonna fix the second chiller from, from locking out, or is that problem still happening, or?
Yeah, so that problem's still happening. I mean, I have the cycle chiller running, so I know it's capable of running.
But you can't depend on.
It won't run in automatic. Uh, this, this work will correct that.
It will correct it, yes, okay. Um, Doc, you said this has been on the, the Capitol for a few years?
I was just checking, so, um, I went back to 2021, uh, 2425, so this budget that just started drawing one is the first time it appeared. But it appeared for fiscal year 24th one.
I think we were hoping we could hope out. But it's.
I know we talked about it this winter, so.
We did, we did, uh, when we did the tour.
And this is separate than the 36,000 of ARPA money for the HVAC software, right?
That is correct, okay.
And if everybody just remembers, Dan had, um, the first selectman had put 100,000 to try to fix some of these bigger holes, so we didn't have such a big increase on the 460 account. And the reason he did the software update, um, I kind of figured it out because it was in the operating budget, not in the 460. So that's kind of why, you know, I realized that after thinking about it for a little bit, so. Does anybody have any questions about the Jaseki's, uh, program system there? And that's updating three schools for that dollar.
That's correct.
Yes, there is a breakdown on the, the last.
Yeah, it's 20 something, each school.
Basically 20 something each school. I think the total is just under 50,000.
Anybody have any questions?
I'd like to make, yep, sorry, please. I'd like to make a motion to spend $49,670 out of the CNR account to do the replacement of the, uh, supervisory controls for the Bethel Middle School, Berry School and Bethel High School project.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Uh, any other comments on this, Cynthia? I'm sorry, I haven't been looking at the screen, is there anything you'd like to add, or? She's in France right now.
Is it the middle of the night?
It's 2:30. I just, I like to remind her.
You think that's bad? She only went for the weekend.
Yeah, yeah. The jet lag is much worse to get them.
It's 1 o'clock in the morning.
2:30 sounds better, but that's fine, that's fine.
It's tomorrow.
All right, we'll try everybody's mind, everybody in favor, um, Tom and Will's motion, he says.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you for coming out. Tyler, thank you for coming out.
Nice to meet you, sir, thank you.
Yeah, it'd be nice to talk to you.
Yes.
Usually I like to do a handout when we have CNR stuff, trying to get to it, I'm sorry, I gave you one last month, just an update. So before that was approved, the unallocated balance in CNR was 1,645. So after that approval, you're just under 1.6 million dollars. I know I gave it out in July, so I wasn't killing myself to get it to you, but.
And when we're out of money, we're out of money at that point.
Yeah, let's hopefully not get there.
Okay, good, I'm with you. All right, uh, next thing on the agenda is a request, and this is 44,000 for the tasers. And, um, I believe we have some, some officers here, we'd love to hear it.
So, um, it's really for the, the first year of replacing them and then anticipate it'll go in the operating budget after that. We have the breakdown, I'm not sure that you should have a party right there.
You want to hit John with it?
He'll get up, Tom, get up, please.
So Nick, I need a volunteer.
I share, I pointed John.
No, I just wanted to show you guys, this is what we currently have as a taser, right? This, this is the cartridge, and in this cartridge, there's two prongs on each side. So when we shoot it from a distance, those two prongs will go out and have to make contact into a person and the, uh, wires will create electricity and knock your person down. It's also a dry stunt, so you could take this off, we could go up close and actually hit somebody like this. Sure you don't want me to?
No, I'm, I'm really.
So the tasers we currently have, every, every officer's issued a taser like this. This is what the model is X26, it's two, three models ago what taser came out with. When we bought these, we bought those and they were ours. Then we purchased service contracts for anything maintenance, any replacements when we use these or they break, batteries. They've been out of the contract now for over a year warranty. So anything that goes wrong, we have some batteries in stock, but we're getting low on them.
We have leftovers from, I believe, Waterbury and PD, we didn't need them anymore because they went to the X10. Once we're out of those, there's no more batteries.
So this is the current one. Taser recommends that you'll keep them any more than five years. Now, do they work after five years? Yes, possibly, but then you run into issues where they might not work. You go to use them and they might not work and they're not under warranty anymore, and that's what the recommendations are. So what you have in front of you guys now is what they call the X10, because some pictures you could pass around if you may also start with bikes. Um, the X10 taser, there's a model in between, it's called the X7, which is, um, kind of more complicated to use, it's a different cartridges, you have to consider what distance you're at, and it's almost the same price.
That was the seven, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the X7, it's a model in between. This is, X10 is the newest, bestest version of the taser. And if you look at the picture going around, the cartridge instead of two, actually has 10 probes.
So you shoot.
That makes 10 wires also.
Yes, so it shoots one at a time. So I shoot one probe and one probe hopefully hits you. If it doesn't, I go to the second one. As long as I get two in you, you could go down. And also the other big part about it is distance, the max distance of velocity that enters people. So you're just giving you an idea, this one is recommended no more than 20, I'm sorry, from my gun. Taser, uh, 25 feet, the new one is up to 45 feet, so almost double the distance, just to give you an idea.
That's a dumb question. So with the new single prong ones, you have to hit somebody twice for it to be effective.
Correct. So you do the other one, the two though. The other one, you have two prongs come at the same time.
And no other option.
No, well, you could take your spare cartridge and then put it back.
All right, I, yeah, it is two shots, but you have more, if you have up to 10 shots to be able to get.
Yep.
Yeah, as long as you get two, you're good.
Yep.
You need a ground, a positive.
What's the purpose of having it done, single, semi what am I? Well, it gives you more options. So the other one is, at the same time, it's going like this, right? And the further out the, your shot pattern spread. Whereas if you have one, you go pop, pop. Okay, and there's training about, so you want to get a, I'm sure a certain distance and.
Yeah, you can make adjustments or something.
On an angle, one, if it hits low on the torso or the back, it goes between, the second one goes between your legs and doesn't make any contact at all. So it's ineffective.
Planning and zoning is right up the back corner of the building.
Uh, no, that, okay, good. Uh, does anybody have a Sierra pickup truck that is parked out in street in front? My, my daughter's car was dead and somebody parked right in front of me, I suppose that's a tow truck. Nope, probably the other meeting.
I'm gonna check that meeting, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, all right, good luck.
Good luck. So, um.
Goes out and gets his car.
So this, this is like the industry standard now. A lot of departments, Brookfield just, um, ordered theirs, um, I believe Wallingford the other day. So this is where everybody moving towards that is either in the older tasers like us, or even in the X7s, or they're slowly switching over. So, um, that money, um, over the five years covers everything. It covers all the training, it covers our guys to be trained, it covers the software, it covers replacement batteries, replacement cartridges, training cartridges. Now, everybody's going to be retrained on these because they're obviously new. So we actually have to physically get somebody in a suit and shoot at them and practice at them. So again, if you, any volunteers? So, um, I don't know if there's any other questions regarding the tasers. I also have a guy, the guy from Axon, he's, uh, dialed in, so if there's any more technical questions, I can answer it.
So, uh, Will, jump in.
No, it pretty much answered the question I had. My, my thing was, uh, trying to understand what was the purpose of having it, you know, a single action, one, two, three, sort of, one click, two prongs come out?
Yeah, so you have more options and a lot more quicker options.
So you think by like, what hits you?
One doesn't do anything.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's no connection.
Will they feel it though?
I'll go feel it, it's an option.
More importantly, there's 10, I'm gonna call it shots in the gun, that you're not relying on two shots and getting two wires in each time.
Right.
Which, which is, I think is huge for officer safety and, and the safety of the guy that you're about ready to shoot if you can't.
And the, the distance is very accurate, is a, it's true benefit. From going from like 25 records that is max to 45.
It's a ton, right.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Um, do they, is there, so I see the breakdown of the price per year goes up.
Yep.
A thousand bucks, 1,200 bucks. Um, is there a discount of doing the whole five year at once like we did with the body cameras?
No, it wasn't, I asked that question.
Okay, and my second question, because this is gonna go into the operate, how much longer do we have on the body cameras? Which I know the state forced on us.
I can tell you right now, um, so we're in year three right now, coming up on the spring part of our contract is a, uh, technology upgrade, which they're trying to get us to sign an additional five-year contract, and they'll give us the better camera, but I don't, I don't. Either way, we're getting all new body cameras as part of that five-year contract. Year three, we get all new stuff regardless.
Okay.
And then we have that stuff for two years, but once we get to the end of the five years, then we still have to pay for each device, each user.
Or turn those back in, I assume.
Turn those back in and start another five-year contract.
Okay.
But it's, it's pretty much.
You're two years away from the problem.
It's, it's, yeah, it's $50 per officer per month for body camera.
Quick question, um, where in the fourth continuum do the tasers lie?
Right before, um, your firearm, more or less. It could be different, I mean, a lot of people are not using their talons anymore because of the taser, right? It does a lot more damage, so, um, it could injure someone a lot worse. Pepper spray, it's still used, but I can't remember the last time someone used pepper spray.
The only time to use a taser is if somebody's actively persistent. And the good thing about this taser is the single action, that you have to assess each time you shoot somebody. That's with any kind of use force that we use.
I'm, I'm just happy that we're not using it, you know.
So.
Unless likelihood of fatalities.
There's really no continuum for us. It's based on a case by case basis.
Yeah.
Um, and just to give you an idea, you guys know I've been here for altogether 24 years now, but been in the office now for, but altogether seven or something like that. But prior to that, so that gives me what, about 19 years on the road, and a little bit of time from, we had, everybody had tasers. How many times do you think I deployed a taser myself and somebody?
I would think so, well, three times, yeah.
Three times.
I wouldn't guess that.
The first time I deployed a taser, I was pulling the gun out of my holster, because the guy was coming at me with a big pair of scissors, and I would probably have shot the guy. But Officer Christos at the time came around the corner and had this taser out and got the guy. After I tased them, other officer tased, the third taser deployment finally took the guy down. But my point is, is that's what.
It's a piece, it's a toll.
You don't want to have to shoot someone.
Oh, definitely, that's, that's my point, that's my question.
Yeah.
Um, just one more question. So, accident change the policy, you can't buy them anymore, right? Dave is on.
Correct.
So can I just get from accident why? If there is like a corporate answer of why you've changed this?
So with the guy on TV?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, uh, can you ask the question again, I'm sorry.
Uh, so we used to be able to buy a taser. So you guys don't just sell tasers anymore, you only do these like five-year programs at this point?
Um, yeah, usually the contract is five years because that's, that's what the warranty is and that's what, uh, like the useful life recommendation is. Um, you can pay for them all upfront if you want, it's just that the warranty is always five years, and we always spread it out on this five years, usually to help you get in the budget.
So, and it's, if we did it all upfront, we're talking about a similar dollar amount than the, over the five years, is what I think.
Yeah, it's, it's the same dollar amount, we usually just spread it out over five years to help people get it in the budget every year, but it's the same cost either way, uh, if it's upfront over the five years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that answered my question. Um, I want you guys to have the equipment you need. And, and you guys provide a, a service to this community, which is very important, you know what I mean? I, I think to myself that if we, if we didn't, if we had a stop sign and we didn't think anybody was watching it, they would just drive through it. You know what I mean? Or, or just take whatever they want out of the stores, you know, it, it creates quality, quality of life, you know what I mean? So I appreciate everything you guys do, um, and there's not a but coming, but there is, um, is much, you know, there's people struggling on, on what we can afford. And this is something that you guys need to have on your belt, so I fully support it. Okay, so that's all I'm gonna say. Um, it's unfortunate we just can't buy something off the shelf and say, okay, well, let's be proud we own it, but we're gonna pay for five years, and then we're gonna start paying again for five years. I can't believe every small little town, I'm up in Terryville or, or Plymouth they call it, and I can't imagine them, you know, having the money every, every, uh, year to do it. So they go without. I mean, they're, they're driving 10-year-old cars up there. So to say we can't buy something for you guys to protect you and the community is, is pretty upsetting. Um, you know, and, and, you know, Brad and I talked about it, I can't believe there's not another company that you just can't buy something, but we want something that is usable also, so I would support this. So, does anybody else have anything?
I just think, I concur, I know, uh, this piece of technology, the end result, it will save lives if it needs to be.
Of course.
Because pepper spray does have limitations. Some people are actually immune to it, so.
You don't buy the fire truck after the fire, I guess, right?
Cool.
Anything else? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we take $44,000 out of our CNR account to purchase the tasers for the Bethel Police Department. Again, in the amount of 44,000.
Bob, would you like a second? Do we have a motion, we have a second? Is any discussion about the tasers? Let's try everybody's mind, all in favor?
Aye.
Let the record show to you now. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, Nick.
Uh, hey, what, Cynthia?
Show, show them how pepper spray doesn't affect you.
Say it again?
Show them how pepper spray doesn't affect you.
It doesn't affect me, I don't have any feelings, right?
Just saying.
All right, all right, next thing is a consideration of CNR account for, um, a, a vehicle, police vehicle, so, um, Chief, would you like to add anything to that?
So, um, I have been a board guy, so just talking off of this, I know you guys kind of know what's going on with this already.
Not everybody, so we'd love to hear from you. You came out, you got a clean shirt on.
I do, actually.
Yeah, they're good, see.
So, um, when we presented the operating budget, we asked for four police cruisers. Um, it got cut down to two. We had the deliberations of board finance, the idea was to come back when we needed the other two and possibly take them out of CNR, or wherever you had one of them, there's other accounts too. Um, so right now we have the two that were in the operating budget on order and they should be here relative to soon. The vast majority of the cruisers are all coming at once, and we have the third one we would like to get, and the timing of it probably wouldn't be on the road before the end of the year, but we get the first two done. Um, and then, you know, equip them and all that other stuff. So I would like to ask for the third car out of the four that we were originally asked for, that we had operating budget. And, uh, went to the board of finance meeting, um, last week, so.
Of course, I am.
I'm sorry.
That was the secret media to go about.
We try not to do that, not a quorum anyway, so. All right, um, as everybody remember, we, we really tried to keep this budget down. Um, we did in the past few years take one car out of CNR, I was comfortable with that. Um, you know, this is, you know, this is for a Tahoe, and I see other departments, we just drove back and forth from Virginia. I see a lot of different police vehicles, the Ford 500, or they, I think they call it Police Interceptor, they have this, this, um, obviously the Ford Explorers. I think a little town of Bethel driving around, um, Tahos is a bit over the top. Um, I want everybody to have new vehicles, I want them to start, I want the hinges to be good, I want the seats to be good. My wife would love to drive a Chevy Tahoe, um, but I won't spend that kind of money on it. I get it that the vehicle's 50,000 and there's a supply chain problem or a service problem, just the perception, I'm against. Um, John and I have had debates on it. Um, it's just a, a, a full-size vehicle. I get it, it, it goes into a drive, unlike the other Fords, but I just think the perception of it, we should be driving Fords instead of a full, full-size vehicle. We went from cars to, you know, and again, there's no, there's no, there's history here, I, I was on a police commission for a few years, you know, I, I heard the argument about, okay, we need four-wheel drive, we live in New England, I said, yeah, I guess we do, we need a fuel. There used to be Ford, um, Crown Vix or whatever, then we went to a couple SUVs. Now we've jumped from all SUVs to now we're getting close to all Tahos. And I just, you go in that back parking lot, there's five or six, there may be seven or eight back there Tahos, and we're talking of over a million dollars with the cars. Um, so I just think when someone is struggling and we're driving a, a $72,000 vehicle, I think it's over the top. We don't have any Ford 500s or whatever you guys call them.
They don't make them.
Um, state police just bought a bunch of them. All right, again, I, I, listen, I get it, and, and you guys made the decision, your police commission made the decision to spend that money, and I just, I'm against a, a big topple on it, so I won't say anymore. So, is there any comments on it?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Please comment. I, I will, I can have the benefit of your guys' assessment as to why you needed this, can you?
The type of car you mean?
Yeah, the Tahoe versus.
So, um, they haven't made any recent amps in a year. The last one that they made was the Dodge Charger, and they just stopped making them, I would say a year or two ago for police departments. So there's only three options for a police vehicle right now, Dodge Durango, Ford Explorer, or Chevy Tahoe. They don't call them that bad, when they call them Chevy PTV, Ford Interceptor, they don't call them, but we all know what they are. Um, the last two years, the Chevy version has been less money than the Ford. As a matter of fact, three years ago, I saved the town over $20,000 by switching for the Chevy. Those three Fords that we had in order got delayed, I was able to find three Chevys, $7,000 each less. So over the last three years, the Chevys have saved us a significant amount of money. This year, they're a little bit more. We're having huge problems with Ford getting their parts and Ford servicing. We had two cars down since the middle, at least one car down since June 17th, and the second car down like a few weeks behind that, because the air conditioning were poor. And you're talking like cars that, not the ones we're replacing either, these are relatively like middle of the pack, new cars, like 220s. So we're having a real, real problem with Ford, um, being, we've replaced three engines in Fords in the last three years, three blown engines. Now granted, it was under warranty, and it cost us money, but those cars were off the road for six to eight weeks, the minimum. So we're having a big reliability problem with Fords right now. And Chevy's been more reliable and less money over the last three years, and it's, you know, the Explorer and the Tahoe, I mean, the only thing that's a little bit bigger about is it's sizzled the collar. Um, and it's got a V8 instead of a V6, but it's also four-wheel drive instead of all-wheel drive. So the all-wheel drive is constantly going all the time, there's a lot more wear and tear on it, the Ford Explorer, where the Chevy Tahoe is built on a truck frame, and it's got a V8 engine, so it's a two-wheel drive most of the time, and obviously, when it's gonna snow out or something, we could put in a four-wheel drive. It's a lot more rugged, um, you know, please, this is what we presented in the operating budget with Chevy Tahos. Um, and that's what kind of was the direction that department, the technical, the fleet manager recommended that we went. Uh, Sergeant Zabasky's been helping out with that, so he knows what it's like with Fords, but we haven't started so much. And that presumably, Chief, you presented it to the division. Yes. Yes.
Chief, you know, I'm seeing, uh, not to exceed 72,000.
Vehicle and equipment, that's right, you get to that.
Okay, but this total price for the vehicle is only.
50,000.
50, yep. The shits and giggles, what would be the price of Ford Explorer?
Um, I didn't actually get the price. Um, I didn't actually get the price. So when I presented the operating budget, you get the numbers from Ford and Chevy pre-state bid. I was told when I presented the operating budget, the Tahoe's gonna be about forty nine, which it is if you look, and then it's got some add on options. And the Explorer's gonna be like forty eight. Now I'm being told that the Explorer state bid price is more like forty six. So it's a little bit less.
And Chief, if I can, if if this vehicle, and I know there was some discussion, uh, the equipment that that is coming out of a car, would would potentially come out of a car, is not worth it, right? It's it's wore out. Right, right, okay. But it's wore out and and it's time to to get new equipment. So if we get the new equipment for the Tahoe, basically now we're married to Tahoe until that equipment can go back into a Ford Explorer.
Like like the light bar, the um, the control for the light bar, uh, some of the other lights that are mounted in different places on the vehicle. So there is some things that contribute computer. Um, you know, we usually get a couple cycles out of computer depending on. So there there is some stuff there and it depends, like some, not all of them have a full cage, some of them are supervisor cars.
Um, doesn't the Ford Explorer have it on the on the on the steering wheel? They have all the switches on the steering wheel if you buy the police package?
It's it's.
Weston, I just saw Weston had it. He hit all the shrubs and everything. Oh, it's an option?
How much more room is it Tahoe?
It's a little bit more room, yeah. And it's bigger room for prisoners, equipment in the back.
The guy you hit with a taser, he's gonna be more comfortable.
No, but I'm saying to get a prisoner in and out. You know what it's like to get a prisoner, a big prisoner in and out of a police cruiser? Uh, it's not easy. Um, and it is a little bit, um, you know, uh, the selectmen had a bunch of questions about the difference between the cars. I actually had them test drive both of them last week, so you can see the difference.
I got it. So I I just for the record, I think the guys should have new cars, good cars. And I just think the Tahoe is over 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 the top a little bit, especially with there's young people and old people in this town. I can go get another side hustle, pay my taxes. There's people that can't do that, so.
But this is, this is actually saving money. That's what we're doing. We're saving the town money by buying these cars.
So you're saying there's an option to go back and and you may go back to Ford Explorers at some point?
What's gonna change from here to the decade? And listen, we might be talking about electric cars for years. I mean, you think I'm kidding? I mean, this this is constantly changing. If we still had sedans available, you looking at, listen, the Promix was the most reliable car I ever driven. They got rid of, you know, ten years ago now.
Oh, no, I I got it, I got it. Yeah, Cynthia, please. Uh, Dan, Dan, you have your hand up, bud?
I do, I do. Um, you know, one of the things I wanted the chief to mention too is the number one accidents that police officers have are backing up. And there's a big difference between what's available in the Tahoe and also the Ford Explorer. You know, when you're trying to look through the cage and look in the back of the back of the car, the Tahoe has a much better system where you can look behind you. And and I do believe there's an appreciable difference for the officers when they're sitting in uh, the vehicle. Like there's there's a difference of of comfort. There's no doubt. And for three thousand dollars, I I just think that it makes a lot more sense to have a more reliable vehicle. But talk about the backup camera there, Chief.
Yeah, good point. Um, the Fords have the backup camera. The ones that we get are in the mirror. They're like really small, like this big. And the Tahoe is actually in the dash, there's a nice big backup camera. And there's also the safety feature. And Matt, you probably can explain this better to me, that you have like um, a rear camera that's viewing the back at all times for us for safety. So when you're sitting in the cruiser doing the report, you look in the the mirror and you actually see the rear of the vehicle has that camera. So it's a real nice feature as well.
So is the Tahoe cheaper or?
No, it is when you talk about the time that our these Fords have been out of service and.
You just said they're savings, there's.
Yeah, just because you're spending a little bit more money now, does it, you know, I know you think of power equipment. There's different brands of power equipment. And you know, if you buy a steel versus Neko, that one might be a little bit more, but you know that one's a little bit more reliable. On what are you gonna buy? That that's the best analogy I could give you in your space.
The ones I can afford.
No, but I mean, there there's, listen, the Tahos have been less money in the two years, the last two years. You save a ton of money upfront on the Tahos. This year they're a little, they're gonna play this game all the time. And the Dodgers are even, when they started them, they can't keep them on the road. That's a whole other issue.
Okay, is there anything else?
Maybe at the risk of being proposed, uh, you know, we've talked about this, right? Our number one priority is safety. If we're not safe, that's and we bring these guys on the front lines of our safety. We promised them during the budget, get a car, capital, our current, so I think it more to additionally predisposed to just saying yes. For me, what is the the most persuasive factor was the reliability factor. And if somebody can't get a car up, well, that's equipment down, maybe personnel down. And that's hurting them and therefore hurting us. So if it's a four thousand dollar no difference in price. But with the additional benefit of reliability, I I just feel like you can't put price to reliability and safety. So I I I get it and I don't, I don't like post negotiating, right? You kind of promised them this in the budget. So that kind of leads me, I I get where you and John are coming from, not criticizing.
John's not with me, just for the record.
Fair enough. I, it just seems to me that we should approve this for all the reasons that these guys have presented today. But the first selectman has said, it just seems to get liability, safety, those were our primary concerns.
Just if I could just say, during the budget, we never got the dollar amounts of cars. We 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 had the number of cars, but not the dollar. The the seventy two thousand number, times three or four, whatever it was?
I was saying though, it'll be down six weeks, three hundred dollars a week. It always gets up that difference. One time. Uh, so efficiency and reliability is with such.
We've had great experience with service teams so far. It's a point where they're turning around the same day. They kick stuff off their list and bring more cars in.
Budgeted number for the vehicle was forty nine 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 five.
Just total, just.
No, the car itself, not with the changeover.
And then there was a line for the equipment or was it all?
Yeah, so then equipment was another seventy nine hundred plus thirty five hundred plus.
It was just broken out in different.
Yeah, so it was like fifteen at the time, but it depends on what the vehicle needs.
So if I may, so please, I had a personal conversation with Chief. And and I believe everything he said, and I remember the story during the budget, and I certainly think that we need to give the guys all of the equipment they need. Last week, I'm sorry, be- before that happened, the police commission decided that this is what they needed. And then they went to the board of selectmen and then they also approved it. The only thing that I asked Chief, if we can negotiate a little bit, is back last week, the motion was to not exceed seventy two thousand dollars. Um, Chief uh tightened up that number and he thinks he could do it at seventy thousand. Um, and and get the vehicle that the guys need, the Chevy Tahoe with all of the equipment and doing whatever he needs to do to make sure it's at seventy and not seventy two. So my motion would be to take out of the C N R account the amount of seventy thousand dollars to purchase a vehicle for the Bethel Police Department. And I would second that.
Nick, you seconded it?
I did, just for the record. And if I get a little domestic, I'm not gonna get a taser.
I didn't have all the numbers parting in the fourth.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
So we will not. I'm comfortable with that, yes.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this? Cynthia, would you like to add anything? Do you wanna ride one of the cars, Cynthia?
Well, I probably, I wouldn't be voting yes on electric cars. I just don't picture that, you know, that car chase with the electric cars, but I'm okay with this one.
Great. All right, I'll try to raise mine. Everybody in favor? I'm gonna say aye aye. Again, thanking quality service and and the quality of life depends on you guys and we do appreciate it. Thank you. I just appreciate it. And I know I speak for those. Thank you for taking the time and a clean shirt to come out tonight. I appreciate it. All right, we are down to the controllers.
Where's everybody going?
Oh, no, they don't care about us. They're just here when they need something.
They're the controller of the red. I feel emotionally tased.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, I get it.
Uh, approach report. So the approach report that Mary sent out, um, I did before I was on vacation last week. Um, so there's slight update to it, to the positive on the revenue side. Um, through July, and I just closed it. Much, the tax revenue. Uh, the report you show says nine, just under twenty million dollars. Um, it's at twenty seven million, one eighty one, so twenty seven two. Um, some of that, we didn't have everything booked. I ran this like the first of the month. So just wanted to update that. Um, so that puts us, set at a twenty five percent, thirty four point thirty one. And when I did this, that top little section that says collection rate current year, prior year, I didn't have that yet from Paula. Current year is thirty four point two two. Prior year, end of July, thirty three point six. Um, so just wanted to update that. That's a big trending thing I kind of look at. Obviously, it all depends on because I have a people, a lot of time people run in August first, because that's technically when they're due without. Um, the other big thing I want to touch on on July revenue is interest. So one month into the year, we've collected over a hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars of interest. The budget number was six fifty, so we're at twenty eight point eight two percent. Um, when we talked a month or two ago, I think a month ago, about the revenue short of the equal cost sharing that the state did to us, um, roughly two hundred, two hundred twenty five thousand dollars. This is where I hope we make that up. Um, we're on pace to exceed our projected revenue for the year over four months. I think the Fed dropped the rate the other day, but I always saw interest rates drop.
I know they have, the Feds didn't drop yet, but I think interest rates are coming down a little bit. So that'll it's good and bad if we hit our number in four months, right? Like for us, revenue wise, it's good for what the economy's doing inflation wise, it may not be the greatest thing. Um, but that's where we're at right now. Um, the other big one that uh, about building and zoning is already collected ninety two thousand dollars, other four hundred thousand dollars projected. Uh, but summer's busier, so um, I didn't pull where we were at the same time, July last year. Um, and revenue wise, there's a lot of zeros in here because it's early on. Um, skipping over to expenditures. Expenditures, it's really early to talk about anything. There's one twelve of them. Um, park and rec is always gonna seem above trend line because of summer, yeah. Um, so anybody have any questions on July, which before I give a quick update on June, that's still in progress?
I think it's true.
Yep, yes. Um, June, so I ran it earlier today because we're still doing old year check runs. Um, that we run through the end of August as bills trickle in. Um, my projection right now, conservatively, expenditure is gonna be two hundred thousand dollars to go.
Um, he really meant two fifty.
Conservatively, I'm saying two hundred thousand dollars to be good right now, which when we do transfers in a couple months, the board will figure out what they want to do with that. If they just want to let fall out the fund balance based on what purchases we have going on. Do we wanna fund C N R additionally? Do we want to fund paramedic more?
Or the tax stabilization, but we had time.
Tax stabilization would be from fund balance, so it wouldn't be part of this, but it would if it fell the fun in essence, yeah. Um, so when we get closer to that, the sheet that I gave one or two meetings ago of the fund balance and all the fund sources, I will update that when we're making those kind of decisions. Um, well, we're not making decisions when you're making those decisions based on recommendations. Um, so that's where we're at with June. Um, utilities still climbing. I still think it's gonna be in the two seventy five, three hundred thousand dollar over range, um, which is crazy. Um, to let the board know, utilities for twenty five, I'm already concerned about because what's been going on at the middle school to control the humidity levels in the building and because they he's having to run the A C to take up the humidity and then the building gets too cold and he's gotta run the heat. So.
He's trying to dry it out, right?
Yeah, so they're doing to mitigate their problem. He's doing what he needs to do. I heard that I went, now it's Brad problem too, slash board finance problem. Obviously, it's really early in the year, but you hate when bad things happen early in the year because, well.
You're trying to make it up.
Bob's going in his head, he's trying to make it up and Nick's saying it, but like.
Guys can, the kids can wear sweaters like Jimmy Carter, twenty nine, eighty, right?
Good for them. They will have a nice warm winter, right? You know, not have natural gas through the roof.
Farmer, all the next year is gonna be warm.
So, um, I have one other controller update unrelated to my controller report, so any other questions?
You're signing what?
No, no, you're not that lucky.
I just take a few minutes today.
Yeah, you saw what I had here earlier, the kids, you know, I can't go anywhere.
Cute little family here. Your wife must be really cute.
Uh, she's gotta come from somewhere.
Um, are we allowed to say that today?
Sure. Um, she won't be offended.
Okay, good.
Um, so the other only update I have, there's no questions on the controller report. I just want to let the board know, it's an operational thing, but it's a finance operational thing. Um, the town announced two months ago, we're switching to biweekly. The town's been on, I was shocked when I got hired thirteen years ago that we paid employees weekly. Um, Brad Haring, the person enjoys getting paid weekly. It's lovely. Uh, but from a finance running the town wise, we made the decision two or three months ago. It's been in the work for years. Um, come September, we're going to biweekly. It's nothing really to do financially with the board. I just wanted to let you know. There are no savings right now. Um, what's the purpose? The purpose is we, at some point, because, and this is where it ties back in the board of finance, we've been budgeting for a payroll system in the I T budget. Um, some of that is we do paper time sheets. It's twenty twenty four and the town vessel runs paper time sheets. Um, at some point, the employees have been begging for it. We've been begging for it from a control issue and just from a efficiency issue. We need to get off paper time sheets. Um, a year and a half, two years ago, Sebby and I went over to Brookfield to view one of the systems that they switched to. Um, they talked about how much work it was to switch. Uh, I believe then the last question I asked them, are you weekly or biweekly? And they said, we're biweekly. There's no way we'd be able to make this kind of changeover and be weekly. Um, so not only is it that's separate, we needed to do it first so we could do the portal piece, the service, other things that we need to do. Um, but it it's just more efficient. When you run a payroll every week, you're constantly running a payroll.
You're never done.
You're never done again.
Yeah.
You you finish it Wednesday by three o'clock and you start again Friday most weeks. Because you start getting this, that week's time sheets on Friday morning from the departments and you start up again. Um, it's a killer one where it's, we had to do quarterly reporting for the state, vets for the taxes. Uh, it's a killer when we have to do W twos once a year to try that our payroll person usually is overtime because
You can't do both on a week.
You can't, you have, payroll has to get done first before you can work on W twos. Will there be a slight savings there in overtime? Probably, but you're talking maybe two brand. It's not, but it's from an efficiency standpoint, it was time. Um, so, um, again, it's not really pertinent to the board of finance. Um, but it is when you think about, we have started budgeting for a payroll software at some point. Um, this isn't necessarily a cost savings thing, it's an efficiency thing.
And this is different than a payroll service, because you tried that at one point.
So we, a couple of years ago, we were gonna do, um, a company which I won't name because I'm not gonna say nice things about. Um, they, we did a ton of work to try to do it and trying to force it into our weekly schedule. With still constantly doing the payroll, um, my office can attest to it. I spent a lot of time at times yelling at them because they couldn't get the taxes right. Long story short, they figured out the taxes with something as simple as if you and your spouse both work. They were taking the full standard deduction for a married company, couple against our employee salary. If their, if your spouse's employer did the same thing, you're gonna have a lot of income that was never taxed. Um, so they told me that it was right, it was right, it was right. Finally, they said, oh, there's this little button that you can't hit. We have to hit in the background. And then it was right and there's some other issues, but the trust was gone. And we're not going to go with somebody to do payroll that we don't trust. Um, so, and that's, and that led to us looking at other companies and that led to the conversation with Brookfield.
Of this software that you need to buy, are you carrying it in your operating budget right now?
It's so, we have, there's a line item in the I T budget.
Oh, in I T?
Twenty five. And there was like twenty thousand in twenty four. I, I think we bumped it up some because that's looked at it. Um, twenty thousand isn't enough. Um, and we liked one a lot and it's really expensive and. They tend to, when you sign up for a software as a service. They give you the big price. When you're close to signing, usually you can get the price a lot lower. But you got to be like, I can get this approved in the next week if you give me this number. So we don't really know what that final number is. Um, but we're also not there yet. You don't beat somebody up on the price until you're ready to actually do it.
So the answer to my question is you don't have the money you need to. And you're.
We don't know yet. I will tell you what we budgeted.
Yeah, what do we do at twenty five? If twenty four was too short, what, what did you budget in twenty five?
So I'm pulling it up right now. I was trying to talk long enough to get to it. I didn't quite get there. Uh, so right now in twenty five, we have, uh, for payroll solution, we have budgeted thirty thousand dollars.
Carry thirty in this budget.
Correct.
And what do you think it's going to be?
The first price of one of them we liked was seventy, doing it weekly. It should go down. I think it would go down some being biweekly. I also think their seventy number is the scary number and then when they come back at fifty, you seem happy with it. But we don't. Once we figure out we need to do biweekly first. Should cause that. Um, there's other solutions out there too that we're going to look at. Um, one of the conversations we had with staff about all this. Is we understand they want and they need a payroll solution for them to be able to go in and see their time off, see all that stuff, which we don't currently offer. Um, but. At, at the cost of an employee, it's not worth it. So it's a balancing act in there, you know, like, so. Um, we'll look at it. Like we're gonna, and I'm pretty good at beating up vendors when you have a. A chance to get the deal done right away. Um, so, but we're not there yet. Um, but it was a big operational change, which I know is Dan's department. And he's probably going, why is he talking about this so much? But because we are budgeting for that piece of it and we are looking at it. Um, and it is a big change and as the board of finance. Um, I'm sure we've had some unhappy employees out there that might be telling the rents, but it, it, it's what we needed to do to modernize that. Um, so.
Someone like to make a motion on Brad's, um, report tonight?
I'd like a motion that we should see controller report.
Excellent. Cynthia, second it, I see. All right, good. And Brad, thank you. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's vote. Yeah, all in favor, say aye aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. All right, anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. What are your motion?
Excellent. That was, that was heartfelt. All in favor, say aye aye. Thank you, Cynthia, for getting on, okay? Appreciate it. All right. All right, everyone. Someone pissed in John's cornflakes over the weekend, so he's not just.